I am going to call this meeting of the Manchester Planning Board to order November 10. I think we have Chris Allney, Gordon Brewster, Phil Brick, Sarah Creighton, Peter Morton, and Brian Fry. And Mark is supposed to join us by Zoom. I don't see him yet. First order of agenda is any public comment. There are items that are not on the agenda. And in order to make a comment, you're going to have to raise your hand so I can then actually unmute you. I don't see Jim and Jane here. Any comments? Items not on the agenda? Okay. The next item is the continued review of downtown zoning, Town Center and Harpers Edge District bylaw. I thought what we would do is start. Hi, Mark. You want? There you go. Okay. Hi. It may jump back to muting you. I don't know how it's going. Okay. So I thought we would start. We had two groups for the site walk on Saturday. I thought we had pretty decent attendance. And we had two scribes or people taking notes. I had some notes as well, but maybe Gordon and were you the scribe?
I have a couple of scripts.
Yeah. And then also just general comments about what we heard.
Want to just go through them?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. All right. So I was on, I'll call it Group A. Why not? I got. And so I think that the, this, some of these are my observations and other ones are specific questions. So I think that the general tone throughout the whole couple hours, but the, there was general agreement on the newly, on the, on the understanding of the approach and what we were intending to do in both zones. Now, whether they agreed with it or not, there was lots of discussion back and forth. But generally, there was a good understanding of what we intended to do. And that one thing I thought was a really good one, when we went over to one school street and we looked at all those renovated buildings, like, and using those as a good example of what the intention of this is, I think there was general agreement that that's a good idea. That probably reinforced what they were thinking. As far as specific, specific questions, these are, I'm not going to go through what we talked about because basically it's all of the zoning. But these are the specific questions that came up. On the Elm Street area here, there was a suggestion made, can the front yard, the front yard setback be increased, maybe the rear yards are better, around the pond because of flooding? Have that a specific, specific request for that? Make good sense? This is, this is one that actually appeared a bunch of different times. Can the zero lot line setback be increased to provide more open space and trees and not create a dark building corridor at the zero lot line right downstairs? Did not like the zero lot line approach. That was just one person, but it came about as we started to go down and made the turn and looking downtown where the, where the buildings were no longer on the zero lot line. It was residential. Where new perspective, where did new prospective residents park? Should, should people actually take us up on this and actually build more residence? Where do they park? This is a repeating theme that happened all over the place. One was, this is an interesting one. They wanted to make the new developments by right, by right, and have more oversight on the design of what that, what that might be. And I think Sarah actually answered that question and that we have, we have a design oversight. And if it's in the CHOD, then it has that, it's a historical district of that. But that was a good question, one that I said I personally need to officially answer to.
They wanted the special permit oversight for everything.
That's right. Let me write that down. Parking a concern, once again, everywhere, no matter what we talked about, parking was raised. And this is a good one. Is structured parking a possibility? And that, that was right at the end of the discussion. And that, it kind of flew off into a whole different conversation. Where they might be, what it might be, who it might be for, and da, 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 da. Oh, I don't know. Oh, is there an overlap between, between design review for the new zoning, the CHOD, and historic? So that was more the design review. Concern over the zero lot line. Will there be an economic oversight of the effects of the new zoning? That was an interesting question. Something that you had to do when you did the MBTA. You had to have an economic analysis of what the intended impact was. So one of the questions was brought up, will there be a similar thing done for this? Oh, this is an interesting one. This one, this one kind of came up. It wasn't a part of a general discussion, Sarah, but there was the little conversations that are happening around here. Suggest redrawing of the Harbor Edge District to include Stanley, Stanley's Garage and the convenience store, move them over there. But there were other conversations. Why are these in here? Why is that in there? Why, though, they were, the line was bouncing all over the place. So I guess it was where the line is drawn.
I thought there was actually quite an agreement that it would be good to include Stanley's and Seabreeze in the Harpers Edge.
Yeah. When it, when it got that, when it got down to the broader conversation, but there was a little conversation. Oh, this is, this is a very interesting one. Should Harpers Edge be zoned for commercial only? No residential. No consideration of it. So that's a, who knows?
That wasn't a question. That was a definitive, I feel wrongly.
I feel stressed. Yeah, that wasn't a question. It's, this should be zoned. And then, and then the comment to follow, the need more commercial, less residential. Oh, this is a good one. This is, just every time I think of affordable housing, I think of Chris. Make zoning adjustments to include more affordable housing. Change the basis for determining the percentage of affordable housing and the criteria by which you get in. Yeah, that was more of a statement and less of a question as well.
Okay, great.
Team A.
How about Team B?
We didn't have as many as Gordon had. There was, at the top of the, the walk, there was a lengthy discussion, debate, actually, that kept us in one place for a long time. So we didn't get moving for a little while. But some questions that came up from there were, someone asked whether we should consider moving the idea of this higher up territorially to get out of the flood zone. And I think we-
I'm not sure what that means.
Meaning, meaning that, you know, where we're zoning right now has an issue with being in the flood zone. And why are we doing that?
It's actually not in the flood zone.
Well, it gets, it's going to get flooded. Or it has already-
It is not in the flood, in the map, the mapped FEMA areas. I pulled those down. But, but, no one.
Yeah.
At some point.
Yep. And then what I thought was a great comment was that in our FAQs, if we could have a chart that shows, that has on, in one column, what is, what currently exists, and then in the next column, what has changed? Just so it's easy to see the two side by side. And that was really pretty much, other than a couple of similar questions to what Gordon asked, that's the other.
Okay. Other things that people heard or thought about?
So I have, I want to report on a couple of conversations I had, which had to do with how complicated the zoning is and how there's a lot of misinformation already being spread around that we need to get our hands on and correct. And there were a couple of, couple of times people said, this is, why is it so complicated? Why is it 10 pages long? Can it be one page long? Of course, the answer to that is it's a legal document. And it has to be. But there may be some way of presenting what we're doing in such a language as a standalone thing that people can refer to instead of trying to go through all these charts and land use things and so forth. As for the flooding, it seems to me that the flooding overlay district would be, would take precedent over what we're doing. I don't think we, to some extent, it's our, necessarily our wheelhouse, I guess, to try to figure out how high things should be.
I had a couple other, other people's notes. Go ahead.
So in our group, Team B, there were questions about parking. There were questions about why not also allow residential on the first floor with a special permit in Harpers Edge? With the concern being, you know, economic downturn, vacant storefronts, more space for residential. You know, just looking at, why, why foreclose that? So there was that comment from a couple of people.
One comment that came up pretty consistently from-
Could you speak up some?
I'm sorry. The one comment that came up a couple of times in some side conversation was to Chris's point about making it simple, making it simple somehow. And I thought actually the chart at the back of the handout that you gave us is a pretty great start.
I think it has some errors on it.
Yeah. Well, there's that. But the, but the notion of it is a good notion. And then the other comment that was persistent was, do you really need two zones? Can you really, I mean, it makes it more complicated to think about. And maybe if you look at the differences between the two zones in terms of the regulations, is it enough difference to have two separate zones? That was a persistent question.
I would say our group had, was pretty on board with the two zones. They got that, why they were different. Almost like our group really felt wrongly that residential one space per, per residential unit was not enough. They were adamant, adamant about that.
It was like 180 degrees the other way.
But your group had people who-
Our property owners.
Ten property owners. So that's a cause, yeah. The other piece that I, just as we thought about the tour, I had noted those properties that were under 6,000 square feet. And I realized that I did not look at the lot with question. So we should go a little deeper into the map and see what properties have other limitations that would require them to have an area so that we just know that. That's just something I noted as I was going along and thought, hmm, I didn't think about that. The special permit for all uses, more, you know, lots of open space, particularly those. A lot of questions about how would the CHOD, sort of again, understanding that this is the underlying zoning. I think we kind of got up there.
That's a really, that is a really interesting question.
Sarah, can I, can I ask Sandy a question? What, you said the other group had an opposite opinion of what? What was the other?
They were delighted to have one parking space per unit. They were delighted to have the reduction in the park. Because the-
To have a reduction in the parking.
In the parking requirements, down to one. Right.
I was thinking about it, what, I mean, if you have a one bedroom, then one makes sense. But if you built a four bedroom, one doesn't really make, probably make sense. So maybe we should actually tie the parking more to the size of a residential unit.
On the other hand, if you have two cars, why on earth would you want to live in the downtown?
Right. Yes, the whole idea of walkability and-
You can have 10 parks.
Well, I think it was, well, let's-
I'm just saying, I'm just saying the market might take care of it.
Because if you think about your looking, how many houses are for rent in, how many places are for rent in Manchester right now? Not a lot, is my guess. And so if you want to live in Manchester for access to the train or access to the beach or access to your in-laws or, or have your kids in the pools, you might live wherever you can get a place.
You rent a house, really, if you want four bedrooms.
What, yeah.
I mean, there are plenty of houses that are owned, you know, by others and-
Three bedroom, I mean, cargo's putting in three, three bedroom units. That's their plan. So that's it, right in the downtown with a free bedroom.
Sure. And they're, and they're providing the parking to do it.
Right.
So that's the market took care of it.
I don't, I haven't seen how many spaces they have.
Six.
They have six. So I think it's still something that we have to keep in mind about. I mean, I understand that developers want fewer space. I understand that. But the point, so the other piece of it was that the-
Whoa, whoa, whoa. It's, I think it's a little unfair to characterize people as developers.
Yes.
They are people who are current owners of property that are, many of them mixed use, actually.
And further, if we require a space and a half, most of the properties aren't going to get the residential use on the upper floors because they don't have the parking. So that's just going to stop what we wanted to have happen, which is more people living in the downtown. So there's a price to pay for-
So there was definitely some people on our group who would disagree with, we want more people to be living in the downtown.
Well, that's, oh, for sure. There are people who don't think any more people should ever come and live in Manchester.
Well, I think that's what they, that's not what they said. They said that they felt that they should have more congestion in downtown. So I don't know necessarily if we, I mean, I don't know.
There were some comments along that line, yeah. That, you know, parking, number one concern, I think, from our group is, you know, finding parking and then the lot behind, you know, behind here and, you know, especially with flooding and those concerns. But vibrancy was also mentioned.
Yeah. I mean, we heard a lot of other things. We had Steve was in our group. So we talked a lot about the improvements that have been made in downtown and-
Yeah, Steve, Steve is great. We got to a different corner. He talked about what Fleet Streets has done, what the downtown improvement has done 10 years ago to improve sidewalks, walls, and the intent of what it's going to be now, future. So he was, he was a great supplemental speaker.
Yeah. Okay, the, so with, let me just ask, Mark, do you have any other comments of things you've heard?
Not really. I mean, it was, like, someone said, a large discussion at the beginning about, you know, and confusion about how the bylaw has progressed. And people were looking at older versions and the fact that the planning board has made a lot of adjustments, as pointed out. And once, once we discussed that, I think some of the issues kind of went away. There were still a few, few issues that need to be worked out either permanently for, but again, you're getting close to the point where you're having some conflicting views on the same, on many of the same issues. So I don't know how many, how much more adjusting you, you may want to do. So, because you made a lot of changes based on the initial public comments. But now we're reaching out to the general public and, so, that's, that's just something to consider. But all of the various things that you brought out were, were mentioned at various stages by lots of different people, so.
The other question that came up in our group was what, what constitutes commercial? And I think the statement that we largely took what's currently allowed as commercial and moved it over to these two districts, I think that's a pretty fair statement. And to the point of, we could actually just maybe do a bulleted list of those uses in the frequently asked questions rather than try to rely on the use table is one, one thought.
That's a great idea.
And then the other piece that came up was that the input was similar to the forum back in July, that they want, that this person wanted active uses, not passive uses. You know, restaurant, or retail, not-
Advisors.
Not wealth-based advisors. So, I mean, I guess we could zone for that. I think that might be difficult at this point. There was also discussion about, well, what if it's a wonderful retail store today? And then that closes and some other store comes in, how are you going to prevent that? And, and I think that's a question that, that we, the zoning cannot answer.
Right. That is all market force.
That's market forces. And, and, but there was a feeling, it's that, I want, we want a vibrant downtown that has people going in and out of shops and that kind of thing that, yeah, we're, you know, that's the, the look and feel people. I think we all agree with that, but, yeah. So, and the other piece back about Elm Street, the other feedback we just got, I sent it to you about 5:30. We got an email from Mark Glofsky about Elm Street, arguing that Elm Street should not be in the district for a variety of reasons. So-
The Mariposa.
Mariposa, particularly the Mariposa building might want to convert to housing. And that's becoming a neighborhood after crosstowing was changed to the, you know, the housing there. Then it became more residential and now we're, they're precluding that. He also made a case for the small parcel at one Elm Street being, becoming residential. But that is a smaller than 6,000 square foot lot. So no matter what happens there, there's going to be a variance needed to be able to do anything other than what's there.
People do like to, you know, protect their own property interests.
Yeah, of course.
We, we expect to hear that.
Yeah. Okay. So Mark has, I think, made the case for sort of staying the course and hearing more from folks. We have the frequently asked questions, which I think Mark was going to take the next stab at trying to get them in there. That use table that I-
We're talking about that mark.
Yeah.
That mark. Which other mark is there?
Glofsky.
Oh, right. Sorry. And we need to get those up on the website. And I think that probably it, that we should not put up the zoning yet because it confuses people in, on the website. And obviously, people are seeing it in our packets because it's part of the public meeting. But if you are looking at the zoning, it is a draft for public comment. And it's going to continue to get tweaked. So I think, unless anybody has a particular issue that they think we should revise based on input or thoughts or errors today. I think the substantive ones that I heard were Seabreeze is part of the Harpers Edge, one district instead of two. And commercial only in Harpers Edge. Those are the three big things that I think. Then parking, we're going to-
And parking. May I say something about parking?
Absolutely, man.
There is no, no board meeting, department meeting, anywhere in this town, any day, that parking is not an issue. Is, is this a larger issue that we're just keep moving around? Is, is, should this be a town, town moving forward to create adequate parking? What is perceived to be adequate parking? Rather than that's just contained in here?
Well, there are opposite views.
Well, right, right.
So, so as far as parking goes, every community I've ever worked in, everybody perceives that there's not enough parking, whether it's a small, smaller communities than this or 100,000 people. They feel there's not enough parking. You had a study done that shows that there is adequate parking. People may have to walk a half a block or a block two where they're going, but there is sufficient parking. Again, I think that's also not a bad thing. At some point, you get to where, where you do have to explore other parking options. I mean, you look at successful centers where, you know, you may have to walk a couple of blocks or drive around for five minutes before you get a spot. So, but you do that because there is the vibrancy and there are places you want to go to. So, but I don't necessarily see that as a bad thing. I think that's a perception thing. The other thing about the two districts, I think we need to really explain in, in kind of our frequently asked questions and other materials, why it's necessary, as well as why the document is as long as it is because it is based on our current zoning bylaws. So we have to include all of the, the items in there to, to make it a viable distinct district, so.
I just wanted to underline Sue's comment about that there are two different opposed views about parking. And part of what we're talking about here is preserving, you know, the kind of unique character of the town where things are close together and where you don't pave over. We don't want to be a mall. We can't compete with a mall. And vibrancy and the amount of asphalt, I think, are in conflict. You know, the more parking, the less shopping, the less people walking by shops. You know, I think-
However, if I may say, however, we're not talking about today. We're talking about the future. If, if in fact, this does catch on and there is an increase in the number of residents that are able to be built and some money actually does develop, we will be short parking. So those comments, where will we park, which we heard a bunch of times, maybe not be relevant today, but it will become relevant in the near future if this catches on.
Well, let's see if it catches. I mean, I'm ready to deal with that question in the future. Not, because we, I mean, if in fact, the parking study had said, well, you're at 80, 90%, that's a different kettle of fish. And what it did say, which is 65%.
I want to add one more point about the parking is, as a young person and as somebody who went without a car for almost four years and without a car for my actual first year in Manchester, true story, I took, I rode my bike from downtown when I bought my property. And I, I did the showing and everything on bike. I now have a car, but I, I did go with that one and know a lot of young people and retirees who both, I've talked to both about this issue. And I think that the downtown is the perfect opportunity for, you know, we have some of the best public transportation in the country. And one space, one space per residential unit, I think absolutely makes sense. And I think there's a whole lot of people who would absolutely love to have that. And there's other communities that it's zero spaces. And there's, there's a whole, whole lot of people out there who, who could take advantage of that, especially young people looking for places in this area.
So you're an advocate for the one parking space per-
Yeah.
I think, I think looking at what other communities have done and looking at the, the market, I think that absolutely makes sense.
Just, I, I bring it up, it's more of a generic question. I mean, a, a future-proofing question, if you will, than right now. So yes, I understand and I agree with everything we're doing here. But if it does catch on and all those units happen, it actually may prevent the construction of residential units because they don't have the parking available to them. And I think at some point, the town has got to enter into the fray, provide something. Not, not today. I'm not saying you're an advocate for today.
I know, I see what you mean there. Yeah, yeah. That, that still constrains it.
My concern is that this is going to be the single biggest issue on town meeting floor. I really want this to pass. So we have to be strategic. I really want this to pass, so we have to be strategic about how we're going to get this passed. That's my my view. And I think we're going to have to, so that that was sort of understood by our group, actually. There was uniform understanding that our current general district is kind of problematic for our vibrant downtown.
I would agree.
That part was understood and I think there was also understanding that can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good for getting this happen. So I I do definitely, you know, people said, and they also really like the design standards, that's the other piece, design standards was like, yes, absolutely do that. There were two other, one other thought on parking, just as a what if, as we think about this, is maybe we go with the one parking space per residential in the town center and one and a half in the Harbor's Edge, just as a way to to reflect a compromise for the you know, it's sort of like dogs on the beach, it's like six months because that was how we got through the the town meeting. I'm just, I'm not sure it's the right answer, I'm just throwing it out there as the, as the, you know, let's keep the government open.
So I just want to say about strategy, which is it's certainly important to be strategic by getting through a town meeting, but if in doing so, we destroy the whole purpose of the zoning bylaw.
But I don't think we would be destroyed. The purpose was that
If we want to get more residential downtown.
If we want to get more people living in downtown to support the commercial uses, if that's our assumption, then to suddenly say that you're going to have more parking than you need, which is going to not allow a lot of residential development, where why bring it to town meeting at that point? I mean, what's the point?
Well, I think because the point is that our current general bylaw is
Well, we could bring something to town meeting, but it wouldn't be creating more residential uses.
I mean, I think it's early to do that.
Yeah, okay.
I think, I think we put it out there because I do think, I don't, I mean, I think no one can pretend to omniscience at this point and people certainly change their minds about everything. But the sentiment about downtown and the emotional feeling about its good is very strong and it may override, you know, the over, the thing about parking. Because people are so surprised to learn that it could all turn into single-family homes. I mean, it's like, oh, my gosh, holy smokes.
Yeah, for sure. We also had one other comment about that the increase allowed in allowed particularly impervious surface was not recommended. So we've gone from 60, I think it's, I think I have that number right.
It's 70.
Okay, so right now in G, it's 40 by structures and 70% impervious. And the proposal was 60% by six structures and 80% by impervious. And the recommendation was that that was much. So, you know, that 60% by structures also by definition leads you much for parking.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, so that was just input, I don't think we need to, the idea was that, you know, with flooding and and in actuality, that might be a decrease in what's what's there today because we have a lot of impervious in some of these plots. We have to study that. Okay, let's see, are there anybody want to make any strong argument for making any changes at this moment?
I just have a question.
Yeah, sure.
I need some help understanding some. Let me see if I can find it. Yes, okay, it's on page six. And it's the addition to section 4.2, Table of Uses. And we have two uses there. Mixed use with first floor residential, but I don't know how it's exactly mixed use unless the upper floors, I guess, are commercial. And mixed use without first floor residential. So um wouldn't it be simpler to simply have one thing that said mixed use with commercial in the, you know, at the street, like, street-facing thing for 20 or 25 feet, something like that? And just have it one because it's just clear, it's yes, yes.
Because the two districts are different. So in the Harbor's Edge District, you can, you're not allowed to have first floor residential.
Well, you're not, right, but you are allowed in the town center with the, with a special permit. But people were asking about, wouldn't you want to do that in the Harbor's Edge District also, right? So then, I I don't know.
But that's why they're different. I mean, it's a little bit hard to read because it's a negative.
Yes, it's a double negative.
So we might want to change the, I think that that would be good to figure out how to change it, mixed use.
With first floor commercial. How about mixed use with first floor commercial?
Yeah. I agree, it's a double negative kind of thing, so I think that makes sense, but I do think it needs to be two lines. Okay, Mark, can you think a little bit about that?
Okay.
That's that's a language rather than a substantive, I think.
Yeah.
And then I have one other question. On page two. At the very top of page two, item number four, conversion of an existing dwelling into three family with no increase in gross floor area. Why would, why wouldn't we just say yes to that if we want more housing? Why would we have, there's, there's no such structure in the Harbor's Edge, I don't think.
But that's not how, that's not commercial on the first floor. That's fine.
Well, right, but if there are five existing homes that are single-family homes and people would like to convert them to a multifamily home, why would we get in the way of that? Because we want everything to be commercial, every single thing?
Mark, what's your, I think the, I think the intent was that we wanted to push commercial on the first floor or have a special permit.
Well
Yeah, I think that's, that's the point is that this would require they would have to put some commercial on the first floor of the street, the street side of the property. If they converted it, they would have to turn it into a mixed use unless they came for a planning board special permit. They just can't do it by right. So if they have some, I can think of one particular property that has something related to the topography of the land that might be a good argument to, if they wanted to convert, for example, the brick building next to the
To cargo?
Cargo.
Yeah, the cargo into three units and come to the planning board for a special permit and make the point that buildings up high, that it's all, you know, there's no driveway, so to speak, to drive up. It's set back from the street, you gotta climb up those stairs. I mean, there's, there's a very good argument to issue a special permit for that conversion if they still chose to make it three units. So but if there's, let's say they wanted to convert the the museum. They sell that.
Oh, gosh, forbid.
Convert it, you'd probably want that first floor to be or, you know, to be commercial because it fills in that gap along the streetscape from the end of the commercial users down by Town Hall versus the end of the commercial users on B Street, so.
Yeah, but the museum isn't appropriate.
Well, if it was, if it was a dwelling.
Yeah, but it's not a dwelling. And I mean, I guess I would have trouble with it if there were 15 or 20 existing dwellings that were like single-family dwellings. But it seems to be an unnecessary constraint if you're not changing anything about the footprint of the building and what you're doing is going likely from a single or two family to a three family. So it, you know, I don't know.
Well, and
I make it harder.
I guess because we're switching between we want more housing and we want to preserve our commercial space.
Right.
So our initial goal was revert, reserve space on the street front in this whole area for commercial or community space. And so if we start carving out these little things, I mean
Well, but but the thing of it is, one of the things with the MBTA and the thing that was expressed often was of a feeling that people had about the texture of the town. And I think Chris put his finger on it at the time, which was what they like is the variety. And so when I walk from, you know, the little jewelry store, gray house, whatever, down to Town Hall, I'm not particularly bothered by, and I think it's a nice thing for the texture of the town to have, there's a couple of single-family homes. There's the brick one high up and then there's some
There's the only one, that's the only one.
Well, there, I think it's a two-family that's on, it's, they've got a couple buildings that look like single-family homes and have been converted over the years, I guess, into two-family or three-family, I don't know their specific circumstance. So I'm not bothered by that and in fact, it might be tedious to have it be all commercial, every single one. I don't know.
But a special permit doesn't, doesn't, it just says we want to have some review of this. And that review would balance the
Neighborhood character.
Yeah, so I think that's the the intent and it makes it easier to understand our original intent, consistent with our original use to retain the commercial and even expand commercial along the street. So I don't disagree with you that variety is important and but that was
This would allow variety to
It would last.
Hey, if they wanted to do it, yeah, it came to us, yep.
Yeah.
So I have two other points. One of them is, why is it planning board doing the special permission on ZPA that was asked? Maybe it's more appropriate for the ZPAs, they typically would do changes. And the second thing is something that just occurred to me that Richard Smith brought up I think in the beginning of the walk. When he talked about, in fact, this is the economic part of this. He talked about, for example, the hardware store. That if suddenly we're allowing residential use above it, that it might affect the market for hardware, not in necessarily a bad way. But it might become more sort of a frou-frou store, boutique store than a hardware store. And I told him, I said, you know, that's, that's not what zoning is, can handle. That could happen anyway, it could happen tomorrow. But I think it's something we should be prepared to to discuss because I think it's going to
Yeah, that was his big argument for keeping it commercial in the Harbor's Edge.
Yeah.
Keeping it all, keeping it all, he said that the kinds of commercial that you will get will be these sort of small specialty stores that are of a small floor plate rather than Crosby's. I I have no idea what we'll get. Everybody's got their idea about what the future it looks like, so.
But I just wanted to raise it because we're going to be dealing with it if it comes up later.
Okay. So, let's see. It looks like we have a couple of people on that might not have been here before. But I'm going to just, what I should have done in the beginning is just say the town's website under Planning Board explains what we're trying to do at the annual town meeting, which is to present a new zoning section, which has two new districts, the purpose of which is originally sparked by our concern about retaining our commercial and community uses on the first floor in those two districts, as well as to allow mixed use, which is commercial, retail on the first floor with housing either behind or above. And I think the best place to catch up, if you are just joining us, is on the Planning Board section of the website and stay tuned there because there will be frequently asked questions. And we will be holding a public forum December 6th? December 4th? Fourth. Fourth is our, is our plan for a public forum. Another public forum.
Oh, and by the way, I found a little typo that we should probably fix. The first intent of this, first line of the whole thing says, create a downtown district. Well, in fact, we're two districts.
Yeah, create downtown district, right. I guess by way of also two, one quick thing and I think the new zoning, the map is on the website as well. Two districts, a town center from Elm Street to the post office and Stanley's Garage. And a second district, the Harbor's Edge District, which is basically the properties along the tracks, Dr. Clinger, the bank, Crosby's and Harbor's Point. Okay, but just
Can I ask one?
Yeah.
Since this was not brought up in my group, what was the reason to move Stanley's Garage and the Seabreeze into the Harbor's Edge District?
That was one on the side.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
There were also a couple of points about that, one being, you know, obviously, right now, it's easy to kind of imagine the parking, but also another being on the corner, there were some concerns about residential above and having kind of four sightlines come around that corner and around that, around that intersection.
And even though it's not open space, it has an open space. It is a airy space, I guess, it's between, if you think about the distance between the building and the Crosby's building. If you are at, if you bring those setbacks into 10 feet, you close that in significantly in that area. And there was a significant thought about a bigger setback in the Harbor's Edge. So
What, what setbacks were, was anything discussed or?
No, it was just
Just bigger?
Bigger, like, you know, the the space, I think it's actually a valid point.
Yeah.
If you've got Callas right up to the street and you brought Seabreeze, you know, the Seabreeze apartments right up to the street and the Crosby's boutique. You know, grocery store, that intersection is
A more intimate corner.
Right, intimate corner. It becomes a very different feel. But, I mean, things, things changed, but that was the point, that was the
Actually, from a town planning point of view, just as a planner in the room, a gas station on the corner is an anathema to a downtown, which you don't want to see.
Even though we all need it, maybe.
We've got two other gas stations.
We have plenty.
Don't you think historically, you look at the, that people, that there was a gas station in a corner store?
Well, it was a wagon repair
Yes, that's right. There's the remnants of the wagon repair in Stanley's.
Yeah, hard to
But if you're laying out of town, you want to have corners defined by buildings, that's a very important thing.
So go back to the question, any other changes that that we would want to
I would say, so I would say from my perspective, no. But we're going to take this and move it forward to a larger public forum.
Yes.
For more discussion and more.
Yeah.
Okay, good, then then that's what we should do. We're not drawing a line in the sand tonight by anywhere.
Yeah.
And and Mark's working on the Qs, combining everything?
Yeah.
So we'll have them, is the intention to have them for December 4th?
Yes, that's so.
So logistical So logistical question. I went to try and find the most recent version yesterday and I couldn't. So where do I find the most recent version?
I think Mark has. Mark, I think we sent it to you. There was a, I printed out a copy.
Yes, I have that.
That's the printout and Mark has that, but I can electronically resend that to everybody.
Yeah, or if it could just put a SharePoint in, in one of our folders.
With a date.
Yes.
Oh, that's a good idea. Well, it does have a date on Sarah's printout, but I couldn't find.
Yeah, so I changed yours from sub-district to two districts. So, okay, I will.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yes.
Same with your chart. So I couldn't find that either. And, um.
The chart was tossed into the PowerPoint, the rainy walk PowerPoint.
But I looked in there today and it's still the old chart unless I can't have access to the new chart.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is this, is this the chart you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a great chart.
It was, uh, I couldn't get it out of PowerPoint into Word, so there are screenshots, which is very bad. It was like 11 o'clock at night.
Well, it's a combo of, of, you know, my, you know, dinosaur technology skills and, you know, the way.
Okay, I will put those in the communications folder. Um, okay.
So this will be the draft that's, so it's gonna stay the same until December 6th and we hear from.
I think that's what we're hearing.
I think that's really important because some of the questions in our group were because people had older versions of things. And that hadn't reflected, you know, the response to comment.
Okay. Um, and then the last piece of this discussion, I think, is should we have a communications meeting again? To, um.
Well, certainly before the.
Before the.
Oh, my gosh, well before.
Easier said than done though.
Yeah.
Next.
Thanksgiving Day.
And what are you doing?
What about?
Next Monday or Tuesday or Wednesday, beginning of next week. Fridays are the only day that's consistently really bad.
What about? Late Monday afternoon?
The 17th?
Yeah, that would work.
And that would be fine.
If I'm late.
4:30, what's Brian's?
Well, that's rough for me and I'd.
Yeah, no kidding. You're getting really close.
If you arrive, you will be jostled up.
I may have to get out of there by seven.
I have to get out by seven. So, so 4:30?
On the 17th.
17?
Sounds great.
Okay, Mark, can you post that, please? All right. Oh, sorry, you're muted again and you have to, uh, just give me a thumbs up. Awesome. Okay.
Does Jane come to these meetings just to check on you?
So I want to start pouring the water for you.
Are you going, Nate?
Let me say 4:30.
I have a, okay, um, so we're gonna meet then and we'll talk a little bit more about the forum at that point. And Mark, it'd be good if you could get the draft FAQs in good shape by that meeting. Okay. Give me another thumbs up. Um, okay, before we jump, I see one hand up. Jim, I'm gonna ask, we did hear, um, you can go ahead and speak. I'm gonna ask that you sort of keep it brief. We heard a lot from you on, uh, Saturday, but if you have some new, a new idea, that would be helpful.
I didn't, so, okay, thank you. I didn't hear any of my comments from, from Saturday spoken on today. And I also had a copy, uh, I was gonna say, I also had a copy of Mark, um, um, the attorney's letter. And he was, he, there were some questions in that I didn't get right out of this letter. Is this, can I ask Mark for us, Nick? Uh, the copy I'm working on right now is 11:10, 25, today's date. And I think I downloaded off of your website. Is that the current version right now? It is. Thumbs up? Absolutely. So that is available on the website. I think I got it out of the meeting package.
Into the meeting package.
Yeah, so, so it is. And the latest map was also available on there. As was the hotel parking. I think that was a third document. The, uh, and, and now just based on what you guys are saying here, y'all locked in to what I'm looking at right here. There's not, no changes to this, no discussion, um, until the forum?
I think we agreed that we would, um, use this draft as of tonight, that we're not gonna make any changes prior to the forum. I think that's correct.
Okay. I, I personally, I don't think this is a set, this, this draft is not, uh, is not quite complete. You guys are getting close, but there's some things in here that just still to me, um, don't make sense. The, but that's, that's just my personal opinion. Um, so the only, um, the only input I'm gonna have or anybody in the public until that forum is, is just to go out and rally other people and try to explain that why some of this is not good. As opposed to sitting here and discussing it and trying to make a few more changes to this. Is that correct? I mean, I understand I wasn't at all meetings. I made maybe four or five. God bless you guys for being generous. But you, you really longed ears. It's commercial for sure. Um, but it's just not ready. It's, it's just a few things. You know, uh, just, just, just a few more items.
It would be helpful as if you sent us.
I'm not convinced. Please convince me, um, the logic in why the northern side of the train tracks is in the Harbor's Edge District, when that section really mirrors the rest of the town center district as much as anything. I can understand the 40 beach because of the size of it and the potential. But, um, I don't, I don't think the restrictions on housing belong in that hot, in the northern side of the train tracks. I don't, it, it doesn't make sense to me to pull that out. Quite frankly, it lowers the values of the property significantly because of the use restrictions. Um, and, um, you know, so that would, that would be one of the, one of my major issues with this. But then there's also just the residential stuff. It doesn't really make sense if you think it through.
So it would be really helpful, Jim, since you feel like we haven't captured your comments, for you to write them down and send them in an email to Mark and to me, and we will send them to the entire board. Because I think while you're certainly entitled to your opinions, I think we've heard some of them. But if you can be very specific about the, um, specific language that you would suggest, rather than, uh, simply stating that you think that we're, we haven't done a good job, that would be really helpful.
I didn't say that you guys are working a bust off.
No, I'm working then.
They did an excellent job. A lot of this is good.
So if you could simply write down specific, um, suggestions, um, to the bylaw that you think makes sense. For example, your, your, um, it's a specific suggestion that you think the Harbor's Edge should just be 40 Harbor Street. I hear that. I heard that.
Might I get a response?
Yeah. So just if you could send us an email, that would be help, most helpful.
What, you're asking if you will get a response to those questions?
Yes.
No, that, this is.
I'm gonna do this, I'll do that. I'll send that, drop it if you can. It's not a law.
We don't go back and forth on email with, um, we certainly.
That's my point. I think this is a good forum to sit here and just say, you know, just for example, the conversion of an existing dwelling, so there's no, no commercial in, in, in existing dwelling. And somebody wants to, without increasing the footprint, wants to add residential within that existing dwelling, which is yes, right now in the general district. You're saying Planning Board required to make that decision in the town center district and a big fat no in Harbor's Edge District. If you really want to support housing, why don't, it's already a residential. It's not a commercial. What you're saying here is you're forcing somebody, um, you don't allow somebody to do anything but create a, a commercial space on the bottom of their residential home. It's something that's already an existing sole residential property, right? So my, I, I, my thoughts on that is the town center, that should be a big yes. And a Planning Board at, at, at the very least for the Harbor's Edge District, right? There's no, I don't think there's any housing in there right now anyways, residential.
Can I just correct you? Can I just, I'm gonna just, um, make sure that we get, for people who might not be as familiar with this, the current proposed zoning does not prohibit that change. It says that the Planning Board would have to review a special permit application and act on it. That's different than what you just said, which is that we would not be allowing it.
No, he's talking about Harbor's Edge.
Okay, in the, but in the town center.
The proposal is just Planning Board and, and you're, what I'm saying is, right now, if I have a residential property with no commercial in it and I wanna add an additional unit, I think with the ABU rule, I can anyways. But if I wanna add an additional unit, two units, I guess, because ABU, I think I'm entitled to one. You should let, allow somebody to do that by right. I don't understand why you wouldn't and why you're making them go in front of the Planning Board for that. And, and, you know, if you want, if you wanna debate whether the Harbor's Edge District is required or not, and you win, and, and you win that debate, then at least that should be a Planning Board. There are no, it's a moot point, I think, because I don't, I don't think there are any single family homes in there right now. It doesn't look like it.
Just, okay. So those are two specifics.
I don't, I don't understand. So this is a few items like that throughout this, this document where it just, um, you know, it's pretty, it's, it's just a few items that are kind of anti-residential, anti-housing.
Okay. Uh, if you can send us an email with a specific, so you've just given us two, that would be very helpful. I think we wanna move on to the next, um, item on our agenda.
So this was on open forum, this was in open meeting, how was it just you guys discussing this?
Yes, but we're taking pub, this is not a, a forum where we're gonna go on and on about this topic. So I think, um, we've heard from you. We'd love to have, uh, your input in specifics and, um, that your specific suggestions, and we will look at them. But, um, and I think we're gonna move on in the agenda at this point. So thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
So the next item on the agenda tonight is.
Hotels?
Hotels. So, um, hotels. So the question is, do we want to, I think, I think it may be premature to answer the question I'm about to ask, which is do we want to advance, um, an article at town meeting? I think first of all, we should sort of understand the, what an article would look like and then we can decide if we're, uh, ready. I think the original thought was would, would this be some, I guess the alternative is to actually add in a hotel use into the downtown districts. But we hadn't even talked about what is a hotel and where would it, uh, what other districts might it, um, fit in? So in your packet is, we actually have.
We have something. We have an article blank.
We have a proposed article. And let me just give you the definition of a hotel. If you didn't know what one was. Hotel. Building or any part of a building containing rooming units without individual cooking facilities for transient occupancy and having a common entrance or entrances. A hotel may include a restaurant, bar or tavern and accessory recreation facilities. It does not include a motel, boarding house, lodging house or rooming house.
What's a lodging?
So a motel, of course, we don't define lodging. Motel is a building or any part of a building containing rooming units without individual cooking facilities for transient occupancy and having a common entrance, generally does not include a restaurant, bar or tavern or accessory residential, recreational facilities, does not include a boarding house, lodging house or rooming house, none of which are defined.
Oh, geez.
So, um, and then borders, just an individual other than a family member occupying a dwelling who, for consideration, has furnished sleeping accommodations, meals and may be providing personal care or other services but excluding guests as a bed and breakfast. So lodging house and rooming house are not defined in our bylaw. So, um, that's what, uh. So maybe before we get into the details, let's sort of talk about the big idea of, I would like to see them called inns.
Yes, here, here. Yeah, hotel, because hotel conjures up something that's out of scale. Or, or the very nice thing that happened in Gloucester, but that's appropriate. And something that matches the scale of this place.
Right, which inn, yeah.
Is, conjures that up.
I don't know what an inn is, but, you know, under 12 rooms or, how many ins were, rooms were at the Old Corner Inn?
Four, five?
Nine or 10, I think, total.
Nine or 10, yeah.
How many?
I think there were nine or 10 at one point. Yeah.
So would we add a definition of inns?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, maybe get rid of hotel and just make inn and make a new definition.
Perhaps, yeah. So we're thinking, so that addresses scale. The hotel or bed and breakfast kind of places, at least conjures up in my mind, smaller scale rather than the boat port.
Yeah.
But maybe the boat port belongs in the LCD. So, um, you know, maybe hotel is in the LCD and inn and bed and breakfast, which you wanted to say.
Or elsewhere.
Along. The proposal is in the two downtown areas. It's kind of a nice, me addition.
Well, we heard a lot of comments at the June forum that people were interested in that. A small lot, small lodging in the downtown area.
And this, and this would be, uh, we get to this item after the downtown zoning, of course, because we have the Harbor's Edge and the town center as districts included in this use map. My one question there would be on the general district, because what happens if it doesn't pass? And then also the general district, because maybe, like, maybe there's some other areas that may not quite be these two downtown districts, where it may be a special permit situation to consider for a small inn.
Like the Old Corner Inn, is, are they now, no, are they non-conforming so they could not? I don't know. I, that's not what I understand, though. I thought that they still had a right, if someone bought it, to return it to a bed and breakfast. But to Brian's point, that's.
Well, I guess you could also argue a special permit in all the, all residential districts. I, I, yeah, I just take his argument. I like the idea of the general district being special permit. Certainly if the downtown, um. Doesn't go through, you would amend this on the floor to delete those two columns.
Yep.
So I like the idea of a general, um, special permit.
So are we doing, replacing hotel with inn and saying special permit for the general district? And yes, for the other three? For the right of that? Is that what we're saying?
I mean, maybe hotel in the limited commercial district and inn in the.
In the other two?
Mark's saying, he's not, he's not hearing us, so I'm just.
You're not hearing us?
I see a, we look muted on the 1623 coverage up there.
Sorry. Thanks, Mark. All right, can you hear us now? Okay, thank you.
You didn't really say anything important.
Didn't say anything.
As usual, yeah.
I think we were talking about a sin of, a, a definition for. I think we were talking about a sin of, a, a definition for inn that's small-ish. I don't know what that means. I, I threw out 12 rooms, but I don't know what, what is appropriate.
I don't like 12.
12 is sort of got a nice ring to it. I think yours doesn't. And then Brian is thinking very strategically, as a planning board member, that the general district should have special permit. Because, first of all, it might be some great places for an inn in the general district. And also if the downtown zoning were to fail, we could still advance this, this measure. How about other districts? Well, first of all, do we have an agreement that, sort of a consensus that special permit in the general district, a yes in the town center, and a yes in the Harbor's Edge makes sense for a.
An inn, an inn, up to 12.
An inn of up to 12 units.
What is the rest of the problem?
I don't know.
Yeah, totally pulled out of the air.
They just looked up the definition, legal definition, and there's no number of rooms, unfortunately.
Yeah.
They do say that they're typically smaller than a hotel.
So would the same parking requirement be required for an inn as opposed to a hotel, too?
One space for rooms.
So, I think that's gonna be.
That'll make it small.
Yeah. I think the one base, base, yeah, for guests from, maybe it just.
And what if it's a special permit everywhere?
Just do it as a special permit everywhere? Yeah, that might make sense. I think that does make sense. Yeah. Because if you're gonna have a restaurant or a, then a restaurant would be good.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be great.
But are you saying an inn in every district? By special permit?
No, no, no.
Oh, oh, okay, okay, 'cause I don't think people would go for that.
No, no, no.
Let's start with general district LCD and the downtown with a special permit everywhere?
Yeah.
Got it.
So special permit, including town center.
Yeah, I think so.
My one, my one pushback on that would be that could deter, I, I don't know if, if, if that would, you know, that might deter interests from developing a, an inn in the downtown.
People love to come to us for special permit.
Really, really, no, I kind of agree with Brian. I mean, I think it's a detriment. If you wanna encourage it, that's the thing, you have to decide, do you wanna encourage it? Or do you wanna just make it barely possible?
Barely possible.
Well, I don't, I mean, I, I don't know.
No, I don't, I think that the perception of a special permit is, would be discouraging.
Yes.
Yeah. I like, I'm with this, my side of the table here on this.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll leave it as yes and.
In the general?
And then special permit in the general.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, okay. Mark, you can make that change and figure out some role for a inn, and I'm, I'm muting you.
And are we gonna also include the idea of a hotel in the limited commercial district? Something larger, not necessarily huge, but.
It shouldn't be too much.
To do all at once?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, I just have that feeling.
Yep, I think you're right.
Okay. Can we, Mark, when we post our working group meeting and the forum on the 6th, can we add an agenda item for talking about hotels or, and inns? I think we do have to get, socialize this a little bit, so.
Forums on the 4th.
Yeah, 4th. 4th, 4th, 6th, this is, okay. I think, any other things on that issue right now? Anybody else, any comments on that from the public? Article to have inns or hotels? Okay, seeing nothing? How about anybody in the room? Okay. Senior housing. Chris, you wanted to, I'm sorry, I missed all your great summaries of the bylaws. I haven't done mine.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna take the floor, and I'm gonna ask a bunch of questions. And we can either vote on these answers or just come to a consensus. So the, and I wanna say that we've been talking about this now for four years. And we've got two articles already drafted, and so I'm getting a little tired of this. I think it's time to move on. So my first question is, are we ready to propose a zoning change for allowing senior housing in this town? Anyone opposed to it? We have consensus, great, okay.
Check.
You want what?
Should we limit them to certain zoning districts? Or certain types of senior housing to certain districts?
Yes.
Yes.
I thi, I think the toughest thing is picking which districts you wanna.
Well, if they're gonna limit them to districts, you gotta pick them.
Right, no, I understand the question, I think that toughest question is doing that.
What districts do you want to not allow senior housing in?
So Chris, won't the senior, won't the form of that senior housing make a difference as to which district we actually allow it?
It might, yeah.
Hold it, I mean, you can't come up with a black and white answer, I don't think.
I can't.
So depending on like the scale of the senior housing, it might be different in one area and smaller in the next, and it might require a couple of different uses and.
And we can try to prescribe that and write a 20-page zoning article. Or we could say that they're, they're gonna require a special permit, in which case all the criteria comes into figuring out when you get the application.
From looking at other towns, they are long. Their, their senior housing zoning are, the Wenham one, they have a separate senior housing overlay district, a shod.
Oh brother, aye, aye, aye.
And they also have a separate independent living overlay district.
That's true, they do.
And they're both long. And they include a lot of the thing, you know, a lot of things to think about. And so I hesitate to not go down into the details. Have a long one, long senior housing.
You know, I seem to notice was consistent throughout all of them, too, is they're very specific about exactly where, not necessarily a district, but a lot. There were a couple that I read that had a specific lot in their town where they would allow it.
I think that's not, that's illegal.
Yeah.
That's going to spot zoning.
Yeah. I'll come to you in a minute. To me, one of the things on all of these things, as I think about, you know, whether it's hotels or the downtown, we've just been talking about, or senior housing, it's a little bit about scale and, you know, scale and feel. I.
So, and to that point, though, Sarah, that's very much true, which perhaps is what Peter was just saying. They're regulating, they told you where they want to have it, so because of that look and feel in ten degrees, they're, they're, they're muted again.
I guess I have to change that. Hold on.
So what are you looking for, an answer here, Chris?
Yeah. I'm looking for an answer, otherwise we're, we're gonna do this for three more years if we can't come up with something.
Well, or we start working on the details. For example, you know, in Wenham's, the seat, the shod has to be 7.5 acres or more. That's not gonna work here.
No, that was related by this.
So we'll talk about what kind of size do we want.
Okay, maybe let's, okay, then let's move on to the other sort of questions, I guess. Should we require a minimum lot size?
I would say yes.
And would it be an acre? Two acres, five acres? If it's five acres, we're not gonna get very many senior housing built, because there's so few five-acre parcels.
I'm still stuck on that question of scale and type and services provided to determine that.
So there are senior housing in the North Shore of the 25 units in Salem at the Pertram House, 12 units in Danvers, and, you know, there are all these very small ones. They don't have to be big.
But small there might be huge here, because of the availability of land.
So how about if we limit density? How about if we say no more than 15 units an acre?
Well, that's what is current in the general district, and I think also in the D1 district.
15 units an acre?
Well, yeah, because it says 6,000 square foot lot, and you can do two families. No, no, I'm wrong. So that's 20.
But if it's, you have a 20-acre lot, the D district, you only do a two-family, so.
Yeah. But I don't think there's any 20-acre lot.
No, I'm sure there aren't, I'm just.
We need to speak.
I'm just trying to think how to attack it, you know?
That's, I think that's what we're struggling with, is not the idea of senior housing. I think we're struggling, I'm struggling with, do we give a density bonus? Do we, because how do we structure this?
And those are all important for us to go through.
Yeah, and when, you know, I, again, I go back to my conversation with Lee Delacour about what's marketable, which are these independent, you know, basically three fa, three-bedroom, large, you know, spaces. And I don't think that's what you're.
Well, so Sandy and I went to Lee Delacour's project in Wenham.
Right, yeah.
And, yeah, it's just a clustered housing where you happen to be 55 or older.
Happens to have a.
And they're enormous, and they're, you know, $2 million a piece to buy. And they're very attractive, but that's not what we need.
Right, and that could happen if you had, I'm on Pine Street right now, or whatever. Could be, you could age limit.
Yeah, sure.
Any three condos or five condos.
You don't know why you would, but you could.
I suppose you could try and attack the problem by defining the size of what, for purposes of our zoning, a senior housing is. And then really, you could say it's permitted, I guess, anywhere, right? Because you, I mean, you, you do wanna have the option to use big old houses, of which there are plenty in the E district.
All over.
Some in the A, all over the place, yeah. So the issue is really the scale of the senior housing, I think.
It almost feels like we need a table, I'm sorry, we, we need a table.
On the, I mean, many of our districts are single-family only. And one of the things, like Wenham, it, you're only allowed to have it if multifamily is already allowed in that district.
Ah.
And so that's something, I'm not saying I'm for or against that, but.
Yeah.
It's like another thing to, to think about. So all of a sudden, because it is multifamily in your housing, so.
I don't think Wenham allows multifamily anywhere.
Maybe that's probably the, why they had that overlay.
There you go, a tricky little clause.
Why do they need like 20 pages?
I don't know, but they created this overlay when they would allow it.
But they have in your housing.
Yeah, they have an overlay district, which.
Right. Okay, John, can you help us?
Yeah, just a couple of things. So the project, I think, is being referred to in the Wenham zoning, sorry, the zone that's being, the independent living one, I think that was created specifically for a project, or a potential project. I'm not sure how they got around in the spot zone. That project never happened, but the zone still exists, is for Penguin Mall. And it might now happen. But I guess, and senior housing is absolutely multifamily housing, right? I've said many times, but before, I wish we, we allowed multifamily housing in this town in some way that made it possible. But I'm also trying to imagine where in the town senior housing would be appropriate and be possible, right? There are definitely two great sites, which are currently senior housing, but not dense enough and not being used to their full potential. But they're not where you'd expect it to be, the LCD or downtown, they're in residential districts, right? The Plains and. But to entice people to come and to develop senior housing, we do have to make it meaningful. A unit here, a unit there, that's not gonna happen, right? 40B might come in and do something significant, right? But then our zoning doesn't matter. But if we want to encourage it and to control it, then we have to be very specific about where is.
And a 40B can't age limit?
Yes, it can. In fact, the, the one that was done in, in Wenham was a 40B, over 55.
So where, where would you suggest?
So again, the Plains, right, up behind.
So you would build that more intensely?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so that's, that's what the MBTA zoning allowed and hoped for.
Yeah, same with Newport Park. I think those were both potentially included for that reason, which is great.
Yeah. Any place else?
I don't know, small infill things perhaps, right? I mean, I know when you're talking about bed and breakfast, I'm gonna have to go back to the hotels, but one, one thing that's interesting about bed and breakfast, you can convert a single-family home to a bed and breakfast. It's the same use as an R3. So it's actually possible to do that without a whole lot of angst or a whole lot of changes to that building, right? I think that is something that, it's up to five rooms, no, no more than five rooms for, if it's to maintain a R3. Anything more than that is a commercial. Sorry, I don't wanna confuse the test, but. So small things like that, I think, are possible.
Uh, Mark, you were gonna clarify something, or had you hand up a while ago, or maybe it's because you couldn't hear us.
Yeah, well, I, I missed the first part of this, but when you, the, the senior housing part you were talking about, you were starting to talk about unit size, acres, that type of stuff. Now that we're mostly there with the downtown district, why don't I put something together for a senior housing bylaw, kind of somewhat based, loosely based on what was worked on before, maybe with some more specificity, and some, some size requirements and other things that we see in some of these other bylaws. And I can send a draft out, I'll review it with Chris, and he's really the proponent for this, and we'll get a draft out for the next meeting. I mean, I think it's, you know, that, so that we have something to discuss, and we can, we can inform there.
I think Chris had some other questions he wanted.
He has another question, which might help you, Mark, do this. The first one is, should they be just rentals, or could they be condos?
You really can't control the form of ownership through zoning?
Our definition, our definition of senior housing says they're rental. So we're gonna change the definition.
I don't know, in our bylaw?
Yes.
Oh, well, that should be changed, I think, so.
The next question I have is, should there be different dimensional requirement setbacks? Height restrictions? Should they be different from the rest of the zones? Otherwise, not, but I think a case could be made to do that. And that would include, for example, the open space requirement. Some senior housing bylaws say there should be a minimum of 40% open space. I think for our town with very small lots, it's not gonna be meaningful, but something to consider.
So what about, I'm, I'm not an expert on our, is it the cluster?
Yes, it is.
So when senior housing, it could possibly fall in the cluster? Senior housing, it could possibly fall in the cluster. Is that possible?
It's possible. It requires five acres.
It requires five acres.
And there's not any kind of, there's not much don't density bonus.
No, it's all density bonus.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you.
Should we describe, prescribe design parameters? Should we say, oh, you just have to use similar floors certain sizes? One common one is to have living spaces on the same, the bedroom on the same level as the living space. All prescribed or we just rely on common sense that people aren't going to build senior housing ladders?
So you're saying be descriptive with the design requirements?
Most of the things I assume is going to be better very.
Depends on the actual design of the living unit itself?
Yes, wires, yeah, levers, all these things are spelled out in great detail. Hamilton, when it goes on, ages and all this stuff. Which I think is, you know, we should be worried about performance standards.
Yeah, one of the things you noted last week.
Yeah, back in August of twenty-three, I should back to the old.
Yeah.
We had spent quite a bit of time on that question.
Yes, we did.
And said, design standards, senior housing should be limited to no more than two bedrooms per living unit. At least one bedroom and bathroom should be located on the same floor as the kitchen, living, family area. Maximal living area should be twelve hundred square feet for two bedroom unit and nine hundred for one bedroom and six hundred for a studio.
We're not opposed to that, it's just.
Again, we were trying to get smaller scale. So that's, there's actually a draft, I was trying to, I tried to, I dropped the ball, I'm moving it into the district, into today's folder, but an area of common open space, twenty percent of the lot area, contiguous retained, no more than twenty-five percent of the minimum required open space should be within wetlands. Parking, section six. So we did have conversion of existing structures as well in that draft. Applicants are encouraged to convert existing buildings no longer needed or suitable for their original use into a senior housing facility. Planning Board considers such conversions, if they're compatible with a care to the neighborhood and taking into the interests of the neighbors and the public, especially where the site is within a residential area or the building's merit reservation. Planning Board may waive requirements, design standards, considering conversion, so forth. So this draft, we do have a draft. And I think to get at the issues that Chris is talking about, we really need to think through each of these issues, maybe. All right, and so.
Just a couple of more questions.
I wanted to just point out that we thought about that in some detail.
It would be great to have a copy of that.
So the next one is one point five parking spaces for each senior unit. It seems excessive to me. It might depend on the type of facility. Some of them have to require any. So we may need a waiver provision in there depending on the facility. Should there be a house on affordable affordability component? And I would argue that if you require it, you're going to basically force the other seniors to pay for it. So I would suggest instead adding a standard for affordability, which would maybe waive some of the density, allow greater units if those are affordable.
I like that idea of the added density with the affordability.
Which I think we've seen in some of the other.
Yeah, we have seen, yeah.
That's great, yeah.
And my final question is if there are any other conditions that we should be considering.
Well, one thing I like, and some, I assume this is legal to do this, and the, a few that I saw is some form of local preference. The one that I read most recently was first to locals, then to immediate family of locals, so like.
Your mother.
Right, right.
There's a name for it, there's a name for that.
Local preference.
Yep.
And then to residents of towns with reciprocal agreements with the town. That I'm not sure about.
About town employees.
Yeah, that's, I didn't see that. That's a really.
Oh, town employees is a terrific one.
Yeah, good.
That's great.
Let's try it and see if we can get away with it.
Yeah. So that raises my biggest concern about this, actually, is that if we build it and it's wonderful, they will come from everywhere because this, there is a shortage of this kind of housing to Chris's point. And that if we build it and it's, yeah, people will come from wherever. So I really like having a local preference.
I do too.
Is that, can we do a local preference, Mark? Is that allowed?
It is, I believe it's allowed, what all the limitations are, I'm not sure. But we'll, I'll look into that.
That'd be great.
Okay. And actually, I'm looking, there is a list on our website of the different kinds of senior housing. This is, again, it was in one of our packets that we never had during the meeting. Independent living, which I think we know what that means. Cohousing, where seniors gather together to form an organization to provide services and programs to their own members. Supportive housing with services. Assisted living, oh, independent living, assisted living has licensed requirements. Micro assisted living, living within a smaller scale with a broad range of services. And then special care residences, skilled nursing and congregate care facilities. That's the sort of larger full spectrum.
For its re-village.
And.
Now, is what you just read, Sarah, in the draft from a while back?
This is.
I think, Chris, you had that definitions, yeah, Chris sent that around, yeah.
With a table.
Yeah.
So I will put these in our packet. We actually, Mark and I were talking about this, we have a pretty light meeting, I think, the Monday of Thanksgiving. And this, so let's try to carve out and do this first. And I think those two documents do, are pretty helpful, because they talk a little bit about how much staff.
Right, because one of the things I saw is good old parking, providing parking for staff. And of course, you want to have parking for staff, and so the more complicated the facility,
The more staff you need.
More staff. I mean, some will come on the train and, but.
Right.
Most towns had one parking space for staff at the, say, something like the heaviest.
Heavy shift.
Shift, right.
Chris, is there, is there any discussion related to Newport Park or the Plains? I know we've taught, there's been some, like, you know, talk about potentially renovating or updating or.
No, I haven't talked to the Housing Authority recently, but I think they have some internal issues they're trying to sort out before they break back up again. But, yeah, they're still, they're desperately need to do something.
There was one notion, I wanted to be sure we thought about as we were thinking about all this, was in the, I looked at the Harvard senior housing, and they limited the total number of senior housing dwelling units in total in the town. And they limited it to a percent of the total town units.
And Redding did something similar, and they only would allow so many units to be built in a single year.
Year.
So.
That's also true.
I don't think we'd have to worry about that.
No, I don't know. I'd definitely worry about that. Okay, before we close this out, I'd love to have, if you feel comfortable, just go around and say, what piece of the senior housing discussion resonate well with you? Like, what is the piece of the things we've talked about? Not necessarily how do we regulate it, but what is, what's the vision that appeals? So I'll start, because, and that is, I have this, I have long thought, years ago I lived in an apartment, an old summer house that had seven apartments, and I was in my twenties. And I've long, my husband and I said, we want to buy that house and live there with all our friends when we're seventy-five.
It's a big chill.
And so that, it's that conversion, this was a conversion of a home, a large home into seven apartments. And I have this vision that some of these kind of white elephant homes, although they seem to be, you know, enjoyed now as, as.
Single family, yeah.
Great, that, that they have a potential for this co-housing kind of approach, which is, may not offer skilled nursing, but offers a community of people. And that's what I'm really interested in. I think, you know, the skilled nursing and the sort of big facilities are a little harder for me to get my head around, so that's. Anybody else want to?
Yeah, if, so one thing, and I was looking at the slide deck that Kathy put together with the demographics of the town on it, and it just, it reminded me of just the high percentage of residents that are sixty-five plus. And there's a clear need, and you hear it from them, myself being one of them, how there's a dearth of opportunity for senior housing in this town. The co-housing that I was curious about was not in one facility, but I've heard people in this town talk about buying a collection of homes with like, that property that's up off Summer Street, that the community living there that has a bunch of houses really close together. Yeah, cluster, yeah. But I hear people talking about potentially doing that in town too, to overcome the issue with senior housing. But I think it's, it's something that we do need to address, and I think that the town would be appreciative of us doing it. Having some guidelines.
You have a question, Peter? I'm trying to get my hand around this thing. I'm so afraid we're going to get into those seven, ten different types of senior housing, going from nothing, living alone, to a full services. It seems like we are in the smaller end of that, simply because of the availability of land, availability of space and, forgive me. I may need to know. The, I'm concerned about that. So you said you've actually heard people looking for senior housing?
Not looking, talking about assembling.
Well, this would be a developer provided facility?
No, no. It would be a group of seniors with the means to buy houses that abut each other and create a community with some type of services that would, that they'd all be able to.
We could have retired planning board members, and we could watch the future planning board meetings together. In the common room.
Does what you said require zoning of the planning board?
I don't, I don't think so. I don't know. I don't, I don't think so, though. I think it's just that this, they could probably bring services in, right?
On their own?
Yeah, I think.
Buy the house, communal living?
Is that something that requires?
Yeah, there's a whole, there's a whole, Sarah made me, my ears perk up when she says something. Because the assisted living, the things that require much more intensive care have always given me cold chills. And, and when Sarah said micro, I thought, well, what's that mean? I think you said micro assisted living, if I heard you.
Communal.
No, no, it's micro assisted living.
Right, so the idea of scale is so important. And what you were talking about, Peter, I believe, and I would have to really dig to find the articles about it, maybe ten or even fifteen years ago, there was such an effort on Beacon Hill, on the backside of Beacon Hill, where, you know, it's all pretty closed, people are next to each other. You know, they're getting old, they want to age in place, they, you know, they don't want to leave their homes. And they kind of combined forces, not in one specific building, but in neighboring buildings with, you know, so they all hired the same nurse or the same physical therapist or whatever.
I'm going to show you a picture of a building in Salem. That's the John Bertram house.
Yeah, there you go, so there.
So that's twenty-five units in that house.
Twenty-five?
Yeah.
You'd never know that.
It's just a nice brick house.
So the scale piece is very important, but the idea of it is, is pretty useful.
I'm on exactly your wavelength there. The service provided, but if the need is there, how do you actually meld those two together to a reasonable zoning? Do we go simple, Sarah? Do we just go simple and provide without services, just the zoning, establishing an age limit or something, and then beyond that? I mean, I met with, I just sat with Chris the other day, and we just talked about the town and where, where these facilities would be and how big they might be, and just, just general broad discussion. There's really limited spaces and limited size, limited lots. It's a challenge. Unless you use an existing building and convert it to something.
Like Sarah was talking about.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I, I would say my, what sticks with me about this discussion, senior housing, is that there is no one size fits all approach, and that what everybody thinks about senior housing can be different. It can be very small scale, and there can be large scale. And there can be luxury senior housing, and there can be affordable senior housing. As Peter was talking about, kind of the cottage idea, one project that I actually had worked on in Boulder, Colorado, was called the Academy at Mapleton Hill. And it was a luxury senior housing project, but it had an affordable component, right? And so they had some buildings that were more so the larger scale, and they had some that are the cottage style. And if you looked at it from the street, those cottage style, those are single family homes. They look and blend just in right with the neighborhood. So I think senior housing can fit and blend in just as is, and you would never know. And it can also be part of like a larger senior housing enclave or community.
Was that, was that a for-profit development?
It was.
Somebody, some entity ran it and leased or sold or condominiumized or whatever they did.
Right.
So I was just thrown down another idea that you and I talked about, actually. There's a proposed senior center to be built with the Masons. On the Masons property with a condominium arrangement. Well, why not add senior housing to that, with ten or fifteen units above the senior center?
I think the reason for that, let's, let's just take it as a given for a second, that it's the perfect place. I think the problem is that the, that the lease agreement is still being figured out and the little actual logistics and the other pieces that you would need to raise it. You need to take it down to, because there's no, the foundations and the, you know, and I think that little, the logistics of it is like.
There'd be all kinds of problems. The cost of building the senior center would be cut in half, and the cost of operating it would be cut in half.
I had.
That's probably true.
I met on the facilities group today, a little private session, and we talked about the senior center. And what they're going to do is take it down, the bare, raw, everything, and build it back up. New energy center, new, new roof, new walls, new windows, new insulation value, new HVAC system. They're basically going to be, keep, maybe it'll look similar to what it is right now, but it's going to be completely reskinned and rebuilt and re-insulated, re-everything.
So maybe it's the moment for the idea to have a heart.
Well, I did, I also, I talked to Chuck and to Nate, and what they said is, it has gone down the road a bit. It hasn't been settled, it hasn't been decided, but there's been a bit of a challenge with, is the Masons who own that?
Yes.
The Masons are reluctant to do this.
They're still negotiating them.
The Masons are actually putting in payment.
One other point to make that I've seen is there can be a apartment or a larger building with facilities or services that is part of a larger community of single family cottages or homes that kind of, that could have access to those services. of single family cottages or homes that, that can have access to those services or facilities too. So that's something to think about.
There's also a new report, and it's part of a national group, that, uh, uh, an organization that takes care of seniors in their own homes. It's like a club, you know. So they, you give services and just, they're not that way. So there's a whole range of things.
It does feel like we have a lot of seniors who are aging in their own home. And so what we don't have is smaller scale. So if you want big scale luxury, that's sort of the, do it in your own home, coordinate with your neighbors, hire. You know, it seems to me that it's that smaller scale. Um, if we, and I really like a local provision. Um, maybe we focus right now on smaller scale without the skilled nursing and that sort of next level of things that, add that in later, then get, sort of introduce this so that there's a density bone, you know, there's a, you could do X number of units per acre, whatever that is. I mean, and, um, we design standards and special permit review and, um, uh.
So is, is this something that we ever, are, is there an expectation that that might become another article for the town meeting or?
Now, if we can do it in, in the way Sarah was just describing, make it a first step.
Right, but what, the reason why I asked is, um, I, I think the format of the way we're doing town revisioning, similar to what you did with the MBTA is a good one. The public forum, getting people involved early so that, I think there's more, there are less surprises when you bring it to town meeting that way. And it, I know the senior housing has been a, a topic for many years, it sounds like, Chris. I personally haven't heard that much about it, but I'd love to see what type of response we'd get if we, if we adopted a similar strategy for that.
But before we, before we finish away, having worked for private developers my whole career, theirs is, they have a goal in mind. They know what they want, they just go get it here. That, that, that building over there, I took, after I spoke to Chris, I came over, took a look at it. It is ripe for redevelopment into something that would be far better and more fruitful, more useful than that building right there. Low, single level, I, it, with a, with a grass yard around it.
But that's not our planning board, just, that's not a planning board.
I know, Sarah, but is, is there any vehicle at all that, that thing is being discussed right now? Is there anywhere? It is separate.
The select board.
Go to a meeting.
I know.
Wait, wait.
I think it is really not a, I, I feel like that's, that, I'm, I'm not agreeing or disagreeing with you.
I know, I think.
But does the current zoning permit it?
It's a municipal, so it would have.
Would zoning permit senior living as well as the senior center?
Yes.
And a section.
General district.
Yeah, general district, so it would have those rules.
Well, it's municipal, you have to do that.
I'm just thinking of the practicality, the, the, the practical application. If we're talking about it, and what might happen, what could happen, and somebody might do it. Here's a case where we have an opportunity to maybe suggest, maybe get, is Brian Solace? Brian Solace is the actual one negotiating over there with them?
I'm not sure.
Up on the planet, from the select board, like that.
But I don't think that's a, that's something that we can, I mean, we, if we want to make a recommendation to the select board, we can do that, but I'm, I'm not sure we're ready to do that.
No, I, I, I've already been suggesting it.
No, it's fine.
I hate to see an opportunity go by if they're doing, they're spending millions of dollars to convert it to something. But why don't you add a floor, make a living out of it, and you solve a bunch of problems? That's all.
That might be.
Sticking to you, but.
Yeah.
Aren't they, aren't they, and sorry, I won't go, that's, yeah, we don't need to go down that road. No, they're gonna be fundraising for a lot of them, right? So.
It is being fun. I, I, I asked about the fundraising, and they said they're in process, but I don't know how they're doing.
Yeah, I don't think they're going public that event.
No, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so next, so the other question, somebody alluded to this, is whether or not this would be able to become to us, with us, to a spring town meeting. Um, it's my opinion that that's gonna be a hard, a, a tough push.
So someone who learned six different things three months ago.
Well, don't forget, we got, I thought of this tonight, we have the stupid, um, railway thing, which we're gonna need to explain, which we've sort of haven't finalized, we've added around. We've now said hotels, which seems simple, and I think we can, we can kind of, um, and I think, um, we might use the opportunities to introduce senior housing. I think we should use meeting time to do the work of hashing through the draft bylaw and that has taken us months on downtown, which seemed like, I thought was gonna be the simplest thing ever. Um, so I think we should chug away on it. The, um, but the warrant, you know, we gotta have a public hearing on it by like March first. So let's, um, let's devote some specific time to talk about this at our next meeting unless something else comes up.
I think we should dedicate it to Chris too, if we can.
Yes.
If we get it.
Chris. So, um, does that work for people?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, great. Thank you, Chris. That was, um, thank you for keeping us pushing along. I appreciate you. Okay, um, I know our sixteen twenty person was trying to commit them. But, uh, other matters or liaise on reports?
I have one that's worth mentioning.
Good.
So the ZBA meets next week. Um, week, oh, all my weeks are.
The nineteenth.
Nineteenth, eighteenth or nineteenth, whenever that is. Um, and, um, I think it's worth tuning into on the ADU issue because, um, I mean, I, I don't have all the details on the tip of my tongue, but it's a situation that I don't think we anticipated.
Of course.
And so we might want to think about, are there things we can do to fix the situation in the spring? Um, and what's happened is the property that is, uh, before the ZBA is in the general district. And recall that with.
I thought it was in D. It did.
It's in the D district.
D district.
D district.
I thought it was in G. It's in D?
D.
Oh.
D one.
D one.
Oh, D one, sorry, okay. Uh, well, Mark, you know the details better, so you go ahead.
Um, well, it's in the D one district, and they're proposing to detach ADU. And when we wrote the bylaw, we envisioned that if someone wanted to, of course, do a nine hundred square foot detached, they can, and so that's permitted. But if they wanted to do a larger detached ADU between nine and twelve hundred, that they really, because we allow, it's a very small district, and we allow two families in that district, that they should build it as a two-family, kind of in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. So, and not have two separate, really, houses on the property. So this is slightly over, um, I think it's a hundred and eighty-two square feet, eighty-six square feet over nine hundred, so it'd be just over a thousand square feet. Uh, so they're seeking a variance, uh, from the zoning board for, um, for the use, so, um.
So it would have to be two families, is that what?
Part of the problem is also the structure that they tore down was like a former school building, preschool building. And so we're changing the use. I'm sure at the time that was allowed, but, so, to an ADU, and their plan is bigger than the nine hundred. Um, so it's kind of messy. And I just think it's worth tuning in to understand the issues and see how the ZBA dealt with it. But, um, Sarah Melish has consulted with town council on it, get a little bit of that, so, anyway, I think.
What's the address? Can you?
Yeah, I'll say what the address is.
I don't remember. It's in Norwood.
The address?
Um, I don't recall anything.
All right, that's.
But they.
It's Norwood.
The posting is, um, is in the newspaper, so.
Okay.
Uh, okay, and this.
So I think the question, the issue is that if the two-family has to be a single building, where they have to be connected, as a, as a single building, and if it's a, um, ADU, isn't it? You know, they, I guess for the in-laws or the, but whatever, it doesn't really matter what the use is, because that's only what the use is today when you build it. So they're, um, the, the two-family would require that they connect them, that they be one building. And that an ADU can be a separate building. And so to Mark's point, I think we anticipate, we deliberately said these larger ADUs cannot be in that district because you have the benefit of a two-family already, and the benefit of a nine hundred, uh, square foot by right. And also, if you have a two-family, you could actually add in on nine hundred.
Right.
Uh, ADU in addition, and basically get a free, free residence on that property. So, um, there are, um, and it's a larger than standard lot. Um, it has, it's a larger lot, but apparently, so, um, thank you, that's.
And then the second thing, sorry, also on the agenda with the ZBA is the cargo.
Right now.
So, um, at least that comes back to us for.
Must see ZBA.
Must see ZBA, yes.
ZBA. Okay, excellent. Um, any other?
Got one more, very briefly about what's happening in the, uh, on the facilities committee here. It seems like the DP, DPW is focusing in on the School Street site for all three. DPW, school, uh, police and fire somehow situated that site. I met with them today, I, I said, I need a little sidebar with you. So we took out the sketch paper and drew what they're doing. First I had, initially I had, didn't think it would ever work. But, uh, with a little bit of planning, it actually might work. It's gonna be an extensive redo of that whole, that whole length of corridor from one twenty-eight down to, um, the access road to, uh, what's the face of the map?
That water.
Yeah, it's gonna change that. It's gonna change that dramatically. But I guess, that's the point of all this thing, not that that's a particular problem for us here. No matter what, it's gonna free up.
Yeah.
Free up Pleasant Street for used to be whatever.
And the fire station.
Uh, fire station, probably down there. That was, that's gonna go up by School Street.
Right, that'll be available too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the fire station is a little bit difficult one. I actually suggested one of the police department move into the vacated fire department, put a second floor in there, reuse the whole thing, don't use the flood area, but, you know, that's, they, they want to stay together. Police and fire want to be together, and there may be a way to do it. So that's proceeding ahead to actually fit plans now.
Be like odds up on the hill.
Yeah, we're not sure, we're not, I'm, you know, I'm not sure. We're, they're meeting with an engineer, and they're, they're using the facilities group to give their blessing as to whether they should go further or how far they go. But right now, it's purely, it's purely looks like that. Matter of fact, that, that is actually it.
Those are Gordon Brewster plans?
Okay, we have, um, thank you. We have some minutes to be, um.
I don't have the pile right. Oh, chocolate chip cookies.
Minutes, um, I was.
On ten twenty-seven?
Meeting, so, we're gonna have a motion to, um, approve the minutes of October twenty-seventh.
So moved.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Um, all in favor?
I, I'm fine.
Um, I abstain. Okay, anything else?
Well, that's right, you were here for that one.
Next Monday.
Four thirty?
At four thirty, no, if you can make it.
F A Qs.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
It looks like it's getting dark in there, Mark. Turn a light on in there, it looks a little dark.
Yeah, there's only one, one light, not very bright.
You ever see, you see the Netflix story, Ed the Ed Gin story?
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
On Netflix?
One second.
Wait, we're talking about Netflix. Hold on, this is getting.
And, and the Ed Gin, it's, it's on the monsters, Ed Gin story.
Oh.
He looks just like, just like Mark and the lights.